Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting, February 4th, 2014. Before we get started this evening, I would like to announce that one of the items on this evening's agenda, which is land use items for discussion and possible action, two point C, which was a public hearing for rezoning at 1523 West Ninth Avenue, that has been withdrawn. So if you're here tonight on behalf of that request, that request has been withdrawn and so it won't be discussed this evening. So moving on into the land use items for discussion and possible action, item A, Frank Lewis, map amendment, PZ dot one-three dot one-seven-nine-nine, requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed as 1202 South Duck Street from RSS Residential Small Lot Single Family to O Office. Mr. Koots?
Tom Koots, Development Services. As he stated, this request is a request to rezone from the RSS Residential Small Lot Single Family District to the O Office District. The property highlighted in the red is surrounded on basically all four sides by the RSS Residential Small Lot Single Family District. It's all used residentially except to the east, there's a kind of a public use to the east. It's located at the corner of 12th Avenue and Duck Street. 12th Avenue is a major arterial in the city and Duck Street is a minor arterial in the city, north of 12th but south of 12th, it functions as a local street. Findings include the proposed office zoning is consistent with the future land use of commercial from the comprehensive plan. The proposed office zoning is consistent with the expected growth patterns adjacent to 12th Avenue. The property is located adjacent to a residential neighborhood. Office zoning can serve as a buffer between the major road and the residential neighborhood. Do you have any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a map amendment request, so at this point in time, we'll open up the public hearing and we will now begin asking for anyone who would like to speak in favor of this request. Please come forward. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this request? Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's findings and alternatives.
Alternatives is we can accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented. We can find that the map amendment is not in appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and do not recommend that the City Council approve the map amendment. We can find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you, Mr. Koots. Commissioners, any discussion?
I might just add that I feel like with the changing complexion there of 12th Street and everything that's going on, that this is probably kind of a logical step in that progression.
Second. Not sure we had a motion, but...
If nobody else says anything, I'll make a motion to accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second. Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. Cindy, would you please call the roll? Ask for the vote. Next item on this evening's agenda is item B, two B, TRN score, map amendment, PZ dot one-four dot one-eight-zero-two, requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed as 402 and 410 South Hester Street and 711 West Fourth Avenue from RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate to HR High-Rise District. Mr. Koots?
Tom Koots, Development Services. This application consists of actually three properties and they're non-contiguous. There's a property in between the north two properties. The area is surrounded from the north by RMI and to the east by RMI, which is Residential Multi-Family Intermediate zoning. It's catty-corner from high-rise planned unit development. And to the south and west, the property around it is zoned high-rise. To the north is property owned by OSU and then catty-corner, once again, is a multifamily high-rise type development. And then kind of surrounding the other sides is a mixture of multifamily and single family and duplex and that sort of thing. Findings include the proposed high-rise zoning is consistent with the future land uses designated in the corridor redevelopment plan. Corridor redevelopment plan proposes mixed uses along Fourth Avenue as a pedestrian corridor and high density and multifamily uses kind of a step back from Fourth Avenue. And somewhere in that general vicinity, it proposes a park or open space, which could be either public or private. Number two, the proposed high-rise zoning is consistent with the expected growth patterns adjacent to Fourth Avenue. Once again, the corridor redevelopment plan designates Fourth Avenue as a pedestrian corridor and what they're seeking with a pedestrian corridor is mixed use, so it's commercial like below and apartments above urban scale type developments. And then like a more walkable type feel along Fourth Avenue. Number three, the proposed or the property is located adjacent to high-rise zoned properties. And I guess that's it. Do you have any questions for staff?
Any questions for Tom? Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this request? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry here representing the developer tonight. The developer does have the remainder of the high-rise district zoned property on that block under contract. He was able to get these additional three and would like to include those into the development. That's why you see those three before you tonight. You have any questions? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this request? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for staff's recommendations or, excuse me, alternatives.
We can accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented. We can find that the map amendment is not in appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and do not recommend that the City Council approve the map amendment. We can find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Well, again, I think it's an area that's in transition and with the high-rise catty-corner to it and then most of the area around it already zoned high-rise, I think it probably makes sense to disown.
Any other discussion?
Some pretty wild parties I've seen go on at that residence on game day, so that may be a good idea to... I once saw a couch on fire in the front yard there, so it may be a good time to rezone that property.
Couch or cow?
A couch. Give him a year and it may be a cow, but this year it wasn't a cow.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to move that we accept staff's findings and recommend the City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second? So let's vote. And that passes with five votes yes and two abstentions? Okay, item C's been withdrawn, so now item D. CB Enterprises of Stillwater LLC, map amendment, PZ point one-four, point one-eight-zero-four, requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed as 1530 West Sixth Avenue, 521, 523, and 525 South Walnut Street from RMU Residential Multi-Family Urban to RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate District to allow for construction of two quadplexes. Mr. Koots?
Tom Koots, Development Services. This is aerial of the property, once again surrounded in the red. It is surrounded on the northeast and west sides by the RTM District, which is residential two-family and multifamily. And the surrounding uses is multitude of multifamily, a single family, and duplexes. To the south is zoned public and that's the career tech. Once again, they're requesting to rezone from the RMU District, which is Residential Multi-Family Urban, to the RMI, which is Residential Multi-Family Intermediate. Now it's a downzoning, which allows for less density than what it's currently zoned. Findings include the proposed RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate zoning is consistent with the future land use of commercial and high-density residential. The proposed RMI zoning is consistent with the expected growth patterns of the area. It's changing from single family to multifamily. The proposed RMI zoning is less intense than the current RMU zoning. And that's it. Do we have any questions?
Why are they doing this?
The simple answer is they've... The original plan, when they came in with the RMU zoning, was for a particular development and now they're want to do a... They've scrapped that plan, come in with a different plan, and this new zoning would allow for that different development. The density wasn't really the problem. It's when you have the higher zoning districts, the setbacks get larger because they're anticipating larger buildings, now they're coming with smaller buildings and now they need less setbacks.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good evening again, Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry here representing the owner and developer tonight. Tom summed it up pretty accurately. It's the building setbacks that we were after in this rezoning request. If you have any other questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions for Kelly? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
Okay. We can accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented. We can find that the map amendment is not in appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and do not recommend that the City Council approve the map amendment. We can find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you. Discussion?
I have no problem, especially since it's a less intensive use of the area, so with that, I'd make a motion to accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second. All right, there's been a motion and a second, so let's vote. And that passes with five votes yes and two abstentions. All right, the next item on the agenda is a land use item for discussion only, no Planning Commission action. And before we actually do this, there was a memorandum that was sent to the Planning Commission that I thought I would go ahead and read for the benefit of the audience, just so... We rarely have these presentations here and so for the benefit of everyone here and also at home watching, I'm going to read this. "A sketch PUD is on the Planning Commission agenda for the February 4th, 2014 meeting. Since this voluntary process is rarely used, the following is a brief summary of how it works. The sketch PUD is not a formal application for rezoning or other Planning Commission action. It is a process that simply allows a developer to discuss a proposed or conceptual project with the Planning Commission. The developer will submit a drawing which sets forth the general concept, layout, uses, density, et cetera. The Planning Commission offers input and suggestions as to how the project can be made more code-compliant and compatible with the surrounding area. Notice is sent to owners of the property within 300 feet of the subject property. However, since the sketch PUD is not an application, no public hearing is necessary, so no public input is received. The audience members can listen only. Should an application for a PUD result from this process, the public will have several opportunities to address the Planning Commission and City Council on a proposed development." So the Planning Commission is not going to take any action on a sketch PUD. The sole purpose of this this evening is to provide recommendations prior to the developer undertaking the significant cost of designing and submitting a formal PUD application. So the item that we have here this evening is 3A, Robert Kearns and Paul Levine, sketch planned unit development, PZ dot one-four dot one-eight-zero-eight, requesting review and input from the Planning Commission for a proposed PUD on property addressed as 799 East Mercury Avenue in the IG Industrial General District. I would also make an announcement at this time because we're not receiving any input from the public on this, there's no public hearing, that whether you're for this application... Excuse me, if you are for this proposal or this presentation, excuse me, or you are opposed to this presentation, if you would please be respectful and not have any loud outbursts or anything during the meeting. I thank you for that. So at this time, I will ask the, I guess, Mr. Ghost, are you the presenter this evening or whoever's presenting on behalf of the developer?
Roger Ghost, on behalf of the applicants, I guess. This project was before y'all a year, year and a month ago. And at that time, it wasn't a planned unit development. It was a request for zoning. There's a lot of things that could happen in that zoning that the neighborhood was unsure of, had no assurance of what the developer would do or could do. So we've brought back this planned unit development. How do you... Okay. The features on this site plan are basically... Let's see. There's the more technical drawing. The buildings are 50 feet from the south property line. They could have been built 20 feet from the property line, the way the zoning was presented last time. We will be asking for the RTM zoning, but it'll have the PUD overlay, so it'll sort of fix what's going to be reviewed. We've set the parking lot 25 feet from the south property line. We're proposing fencing along the end of the parking lot, so when a car comes down there at night, it's not shining its lights into the back windows of the houses next door. We'll get screening through there. The other... The density is still the same. We've moved all the dumpsters. They'll be along the main road, so no dumpsters down at the end of the parking lots. Sidewalks internally. Screening, there's... Go back. Significant landscaping on this site. The basketball, the common court area is away from the residential. The residents are down in this area, along here. The structures are 37 feet, two inches tall, which is a two-foot over the maximum height. By doing a PUD, we can request that variance to go up that additional two feet. Driveways, there's not... The only access, well, there's two accesses out onto Mercury. The main one being as close to the commercial on Perkins as we could get. The other one is closer to Marine Drive. Project this size needs two access points, just for emergency vehicles alone, in case something happens to one of the driveways. No parking lot lights that would glare into the neighbors' backyards, where those will all be directed and limited on their spread. One of the concerns last time, we've made sure all the buildings are perpendicular along the residential area, are pretty much perpendicular if they're close to the property line. There are no windows on those end walls. So the windows are on the east and the west side. And if you... There's a sightline. If somebody was at their window, like an east-facing window, and could look straight south, that's a representation of what the sightline would be. We're proposing to use evergreens along the areas, not at the parking lots, but where you're between the buildings where you could be seen back to the neighborhood. Those are sort of the feature of those, you know, things we heard last time. We wanted to make sure they were incorporated into the plan and the neighbors would be able to rely on those items being provided if this is approved. We will make another application, the follow-up from this. Any input you all have that you'd like to see us consider? Then we'll bring this back, resubmit it after February 21st to the city. At that time, it'll come in as a preliminary PUD and zoning request for your consideration and recommendation to the City Council. Questions?
You mentioned, Paul, ago, that you said the density was the same as, I guess...
As our proposal last time.
Oh, okay, I guess I missed that.
The RTM allow... I'm sorry, it's probably... If y'all have got one of these drawings, it's really small print. The density in the RTM would allow 20 units per acre and our proposal is 30 units per acre. And this would fix that. I do need to talk to staff about that because we might have 10 more units, but no more beds. There's some four and five bedroom units and the market may fit better for two and three-bedroom units. So you might have a few more units, but no more beds in the complex, so I'll work with staff on how to represent that. But one of our quirks in our city code, we count doors as the units, not the number of beds, which is what impacts all the infrastructure.
So are you saying that it's more dense than what the normal zoning...
It's half of what's allowed.
It's half of what's allowed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood.
It's half of what's allowed.
Dense being on that, okay. Thank you.
We're going to... We've provided, I think, about 10% more parking than's required and we're going to ask for a reduction in the bicycle spaces. It would require 713 bicycle parking spaces and we're proposing... I'm sorry. Bicycles, 346. We're going to ask for 135. Those are significant, I think, changes from what's allowed in code. Any questions, any direction?
How many residents do you expect to be in there, at full capacity?
Well, if you assume there's one in every bed, there's 883 beds.
How many parking spots?
1,002 plus 27 handicap.
I did also want to say to the commissioners, I forgot to mention this earlier, that in our discussion with the presenter this evening, that because we're not taking any action formally, that it really wouldn't be appropriate to say, after you ask your questions if they're answered, you know, to say, "I think this is something I would support or not support." That would be for a future discussion if an application comes forward.
We would like to... I mean, if there's other things in your next consideration you would like to see addressed. I think that's a big part of this presentation.
Can you talk a little bit about the setbacks?
Along this south line over here, we have the end of the buildings 50 feet from the property line and that table's wrong. I've got to correct that. It has the wrong number in it as far as what we're requesting.
Okay.
Assuming that's the rear yard, you know, that's... But we're going to be 50 feet from the property line.
Right.
Over on the commercial side, we're allowed five feet plus three foot per story, but we're proposing 25 feet abutting the commercial. And I think we're 25 feet along Marine and 25 feet along Mercury. Is that... You're talking about the perimeter setback?
Yeah, I mean, mostly I was asking about the setbacks that are adjacent to the...
The neighborhood?
The Lakeview Ridge.
Yes, sir. 50 foot, as close as a building would be. And the code would allow us to be within 20 feet. Actually, yeah, it would allow us to be within 20 feet because three foot or three stories would still only be 11 feet.
Did you have other pictures of building elevations? I know there was an elevation that was shown with the line of sight. Okay, yeah.
Yes, this bottom one is the character of the buildings that they proposed. Then the upper ones are the clubhouse, about 9,900 square feet of clubhouse, recreation, You can go online to the avenue at Lubbock and see a bunch more pictures that they have of their project there.
Any other questions for Mr. Ghost?
I pretty well addressed the questions I had on my list, so...
When we come back, there'll be a little more detail on grading and there'll be a drainage study will have been performed and the preliminaries on the drainage, addressing the flow of the water, will be prepared. Joe?
I noticed the detention's pretty close right out there to the boundary. Which way is the simple... So the question, but which way will that flow if it goes over or how does that...
There's a drainage right about in there already that comes... Actually, this drains clear up to Aspen Heights, it comes down through here and then comes down through this neighborhood to Lakeview and we'll have to limit that flow to no more than it is currently. So that's a... That area is... There's probably a four to six-foot bluff right along there. So, and that's a, that area's, there's probably a 4-to-6-foot bluff right along there, an old wash or something, so we're going to use that. We will be putting a berm along the south property line to contain the water.
And that'll be, I guess that would be shown more clearly on the application and...
Oh, yeah.
Reviewed by staff and all of that stuff for compliance.
We will be, once we get preliminary, if we get preliminary approval through the city council, then final approval will be by staff, and make sure we meet all the technical requirements, part of the grading and everything.
I might have a question. It may take staff to answer it, but will there be a traffic study required if this application isn't submitted? Is it, Colin, do you want to address that?
Paula Dennis in Development Services, yes, the traffic impact analysis, because of the amount of additional traffic being generated from this development, will be required as part of any submittal, whether it was a straight zoning or if it was just, you know, whatever the application comes in, the PUD, if that's the way it proceeds, then a TIA is necessary.
At preliminary or at the final?
I would have to double-check with the code to see specifically when it is. The, the recommendations of that traffic impact analysis will address any improvements to Mercury, any improvements to Marine, and possibly improvements to Perkins and/or Lakeview. When other developments have come in in the vicinity, if you notice, there are improvements not just on the immediate street that access was taken from, but there was also the nearest collector or arterial that improvements had to be made to as well.
Right, and when will that come into the application?
That, that's what I was saying, I'd have to check code. I don't have it right here in front of me, and I don't recall if it's at preliminary or at final. It's definitely well before building permits are issued that that information has to be provided, and the design of any improvements that may be necessary, those would have to be made. The design would be, that's designed like any other, drainage, utilities, anything like that. It's part of, considered part of the required improvements for the development. So all the design has to come in at that time with all of those together.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else for Mr. Ghost?
Thank you.
Thank you. So since this was just a sketched PUD, and there's no action required by our planning commission, that concludes that item. We'll move on to item number four, approval of the meeting summary for discussion and possible action. A, approval of the regular meeting summary of October 15th, 2013.
I did have a question. Shows, shows me as vice chair. Was I, when did we have elections, Cindy? I couldn't remember.
You're asking me to remember that far?
Ah, yeah, no, I couldn't either. I might just ask you to review that. I don't know when, couldn't remember. I think, I think we're usually July, but I don't know when elections were this time, so...
I just get so used to you guys all being there, so I don't change the upper block.
No, no, I understand. And actually, I might as well say it's on, it's on both of these, so if you don't mind checking.
That's why I looked and seen, that's what I did.
Thank you. I have no other changes. Motion to approve the regular minutes of October 15th, 2013. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
With noted changes.
With noted changes, yes.
Possible change.
Possible noted changes.
Mr. Merfield didn't say anything?
I, I was not at that meeting, and I'm not going to vote on those matters. I'm going to abstain twice here.
Those minutes are approved for yes votes. Item 4B, approval of the regular meeting summary of November 19th, 2013.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Let's vote.
I have to get a faster operator.
The next item on the agenda is, sorry, that passed with five votes yes. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff for discussion and possible action. Our next planning commission meeting is February 18th, 2014. And with that, the chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Vote.
Abstaining.
When that passes, five to nothing.